I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our January 23 Tiverton School Committee meeting. Anyone sign up for open forum? I entertain a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
Make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor? Mr. Eric?
Yes, Fort Barton principal leave of absence. And the correspondence was our letter that I gave to Mrs. Mello when we had the joint meeting with the Budget Committee and Town Council regarding our initial budget submission. It was just in letter form per the committee's direction.
And that fulfilled the...
Yeah, that met our requirement for the January 15 notification.
Okay. Is that it? I entertain a motion to move up items eight, A, and E.
Second.
Motion to move up item eight, A and E.
All those in favor? Our esteemed Legislative Delegation, Mr. Edwards, Mr. Canario, Mr. Beleg.
Mrs. Costa asked us for a legislative grant for your middle school buses so they could go to the mock trial. So, having had my middle daughter go through the mock trials in Tiverton, took a special interest in it, and my colleague, Senator Canario, Senator Beleg joined in, and we were able to acquire a legislative grant, you know, of $700 so that they can go to wherever they need to this upcoming session and do phenomenal works with the mock trial.
That's great.
I think they were very good last year, and they were first or second.
I believe they were first, actually.
First?
Does someone want to go accept it so I can take a picture?
I guess that's me. So, I really appreciate, this is a great program. However, unfortunately, my two elder sons are now litigating every answer I give them.
Practice for later. Actually, one of your members of the mock trial, when my daughter was in it, was Ali DiMediris, and she is now a lawyer. She works for a Superior Court Judge in Philadelphia.
Oh, nice.
So, she has really...
Stand very well.
So, on behalf of the delegation...
Smile this way. Thank you.
Wally had the great look.
Thank you for coming. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate everything you do.
Pass it to the money person. Trying to get back in the routine.
That's right.
Important people hold on to the money.
Okay, so, item eight, E, annual sculpture contest. Ms. Christ?
Good evening. Really, really proud to announce that the Core organization has received its first state grant from RISC. To create a larger sculpture contest. We had over 120 last year. So, this year, we are generating corporate sponsors. We kick it out February 12 at all of the elementary schools with a visit from RIRRC and Maxman. Talk about recycling and the value of upcycling and reimagining, recreating, and remaking things of art from found objects. So, we begin February 12. We will be announcing winners on April 21 at the library, and we will also be planting trees at the library, pending approval from the trustees. And thank you so much for involving all the schools. We love what we do, and we're happy to always create a layered community event where kids can learn and create around the community.
And thank you, Gloria, for the partnership with Core in our schools. It's just opportunities they wouldn't have otherwise. We appreciate it very much.
We're happy to be here. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, back to old business. Item seven, A, 2018-2019 budget.
While David's getting the PowerPoint ready. For the committees, I gave each member before the start of the meeting a list, three pages, which are lists of the work that the Budget Finance Subcommittee worked on this past Saturday. Mrs. Polish, Mrs. Farnworth, myself, Elisa, and Amy met, and we reviewed all the additional budget requests that came in from the principals along, as well as from myself and from Amy. And we discussed them, kicked all the requests around, and then we prioritized them, as you can see. And the purpose of tonight is really just to familiarize the rest of the committee members with what the requests were and the recommendations that we're asking the committee to consider. I think, because we do have a lot of data to process, I think it might be best if tonight everybody just ask any questions you may have, and then we bring it back at our next meeting for further discussion and maybe start finalizing some of these recommendations.
Yeah, we do have, just for the other members' benefit, we have asked for another meeting on February 10.
Yes.
We have asked for various historical data on budget versus actual. We're going to be looking again at our historical fund balance, as well as a draft of the current year audit. So, we are still digging into some other information at this point.
So, another meeting on the 10th of the Finance Committee?
Of the Finance Subcommittee.
Finance Committee, okay.
The next school committee meeting's on the 13th.
All right.
Dr. Black?
Yes, Mrs. Black.
First of all, I'd like to thank the Subcommittee for doing that. And I see that you had to replace the gym divider at the high school, and did I ask why you didn't include the middle school one? Is there a reason? It doesn't need it as bad, no? I know that was...
Well, why don't we... Just for purposes of this, would it be easier if we just go through what we had?
Let's start at the beginning, and then we can answer.
I think that's probably the best way to do it, yeah.
The first category of requests are those that we are recommending for consideration by the school committee. And these are in order of our preference, even though they don't have numbers. But the first recommendation is to contract out to hire two social workers who would be assigned to Fort Barton and Ranger. The purpose of these two positions would provide us additional coverage for those students that are suffering from social-emotional issues. We have seen an uptick, a significant uptick, since last year in the number of cases that our staff has had to deal with. And currently, we simply did not have enough staff when we started the school year to meet the demand that we were having. What we've done since the start of the school year is that Special Ed has hired a full-time social worker that will be starting at the middle school on February 5. We have increased the .4 social worker at the high school to .8, and we have moved the .6 social worker that was at the middle school down to Pecasset. So, those three schools, in this school year, will be getting immediate support. These positions are in our budget, in our proposed 18-19 budget. These are in addition to that. It's to provide support to Fort Barton and Ranger because we weren't able to afford it for this year. And the reason why I'm recommending, and we talked about it on Saturday, with social workers, by contracting them out, it gives us more flexibility. We can get people who can work, just not from a 7 to 2 schedule or from an 8 to 3 schedule. We might be able to bring them in for four hours a day and then have them go work with parents and their families at night, if needed. So, we're looking at a more flex, trying to provide a more flexible model to provide our services to our students. We already have one student assistance counselor, you know, using this model. We've had her here for quite a while. And we would just really be expanding on that kind of model of getting a contracted employer, and they would be two licensed social workers so they could counsel. They would be certified counselors as well to help meet the needs of our students. So, when I did my tours last year, when I talked with the teachers, and when I did them this past fall, that was the number-one priority. The first thing out of every faculty's mouth was, "Help us with the number of kids that we're seeing with social-emotional issues." Because what happens is, even if it's just one student, it takes up all our resources at any given time. And then, when we didn't have coverage, complete, full-time coverage at the schools, we had to pull people from other schools, which created a trickle-down effect. So, we feel that this is, would be a good bang for our buck in order to support that population. And so, if it was approved, by next year, we will have hired two and a half, I'm sorry, three and a half positions to support students that have social-emotional issues.
So, what is the full-time equivalent of these two positions?
These folks are less expensive than teachers, simply because we're not, they're not teachers.
I get that part. Are you talking like a .4 position?
No, they'd be full-time.
These are full-time positions.
No, they'd be full-time, yes.
Okay, all right.
Yes, we envision them as full-time positions. The second item, which was in our budget proposal, but it didn't make the initial submission, was to add an additional 1/5 remedial math position at Pecasset. We have about 10 to 15 students who are currently not being serviced that could be serviced if we added that 1/5 remedial math position. The third item, substitutes, was the second most talked-about topic, not only with my teacher, not only with the teachers, but also with my principals and the lack thereof. We are currently, and it's been going on for several years, we have a substitute shortage, just not here in Tiverton, but in the state of Rhode Island. It's compounded by two factors. One, we have a strong economy right now, and people who might think about being a sub aren't, don't want to do it because they're employed, working somewhere else. The second is that we don't have a high turnover rate. That is, we don't have a lot of teachers retiring. By a lot, I mean six or seven a year, like we used to have. So, teachers, when they come out of college, used to work for a district in hopes that a job would come up within a year or two and would be considered. Well, since teachers really can't retire anymore for a number until they're 67 years old, teachers aren't retiring out. So, those people that are coming out of college with teaching degrees are going to Connecticut and Massachusetts. And we simply don't have them. So, in order to try to get more interest, we're recommending that we increase our daily sub rate from $85 to $100 in hopes of trying to get more people. The third factor that, why we're struggling with subs, is that those subs we do have are being used, we're seeing more and more long-term substitutes, people who need knee replacements, health, other health issues, and that, you know, we use our subs, they can become long-term subs, so then they don't become available on a day-to-day basis. So, we would like to try to increase the number of substitutes we get by increasing the daily sub rate. The fourth item...
So, Bill, before we go move on from that, so if I do the math right, we have about 2,000 substitute days per year? Is that correct?
I'd have to, I'd have to look into, it's probably around there. I don't know off the top of my...
If it's $15 per day that you're increasing at 30,000?
We increase it 17% off the total.
Yeah, I'm just sort of, so about 11 full-time equivalents of teaching.
11 days, yeah.
Okay.
Just to note on this as well, there were two other quick things. We did look at the hiring a contractor model.
Yes, we did.
Where a contractor would go out and get subs, but based upon both Bill's discussion and some of my discussions with other districts, they found that because there's such a shortage in Rhode Island, you basically paid your money for a consultant who didn't do any better than you did.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so, and then the other thing is, there is a bill in the General Assembly, right now in Mass, you can substitute if you have an associate's degree. In Rhode Island, you have to have a bachelor's degree. There is a bill in the General Assembly to make it more, move to the Massachusetts model, allowing people with associate's degrees. So, we aren't necessarily going to discuss that tonight, but we probably should at some other future date.
Yeah. I think it'd be interesting to get the numbers about how many days of substitution we are experiencing per year.
Sure. We have that, I just didn't...
Yeah, I'm sure we do, and it's kind of tangential, but I think it'd still be worthwhile considering.
And I think, too, that would, you know, if that was passed in the General Assembly, we may be able to come back and revisit this in another year.
Yes.
And restructure it.
Yeah.
Because at that point, we may very well have more candidates applying.
All right, okay. Sorry, go ahead.
The fourth item is to, and again, Mr. Ashley asked for this last year. He did not in the initial budget submissions, but when we asked the principals to resubmit their requests, Mr. Ashley resubmitted, he would like to see a academic support program get started at the high school, and initially started out with a halftime teacher. And that person, ideally, what we talked about would work, and we don't have anything set in stone, but we were thinking that the person could, if we could get a memorandum of agreement with the teachers' union possibly, to get more flexibility so they could do their workday, start late in the afternoon, and then go maybe into the early evening where the students are available after school versus trying to capture them during the day, so.
So, you envision this as a one-on-one person, or...
It would be one person. It'd be like a tutoring situation. Chris, you want to kind of expound on that a little, please?
So, it would be the case manager model, where the educator would work with the set caseload, identify students that essentially we know we have right now, but we're not quite providing supports that we clearly would want, albeit we might have reading or math struggles or combination there, or executive function organizations, but it's that, for assumptions, we already, if they have specific plans, there's support for this, and if they have other students where the knee hasn't been so great that they're failing multiple classes and kind of a log, but we've got that, they're not necessarily doing very well either. And if we have a support like this, this person would be a key communicator, supporting the general ed teachers that the students have, and then they work...
I see. So, the students, from what it sounds like you're saying, would be ones who don't necessarily have an IEP or a special education plan in place.
Be for any kid.
But it could be for any kid.
Yes, absolutely.
But it's also addressing, to a certain extent, kids that don't necessarily fall into that category or haven't been identified in that way. I see.
And I would think that this would be generally children who have multiple class concerns as opposed to just one, because I know our teachers are generally very available after school.
Right.
But for some kids that have multiple issues, I can understand that, yeah.
Okay.
The next item, Mr. Ashley asked for, was for an additional $10,000 for instructional supplies for his departments at the high school.
Can you gloss that one for us a little bit?
Chris, you want to?
Yeah. So, this was a combination of departments that, when they took a second look, this was really replacement and additional supplies that they've been looking to get for several years. So, for example, there's a science department, they have a number of outdated models, and also just no models who are teaching instructional purposes that ideally they would replace. There's a human anatomy model that's missing some pieces, it's several seventy...
Sounds a little alarming.
There's a gentleman being chief.
What, with a doctor?
Yeah, well, no, sometimes it's quite appropriate, but all the same.
And it's similar in some of our hundred departments as well, the math departments, when they were looking at the places and stuff, again, ideally, they've been kind of trying to make do, sharing...
Okay.
And the last two items for consideration was, this came from Amy, to add an additional $10,000 for PD consultants. Do you want to expand on that one, Amy?
Thank you, yes. As we've increased our professional learning time for teachers, and as we are a learning organization with a lot of innovation and challenges and getting up to speed to do, it seemed appropriate to ask for funds to support the teachers' professional learning. At this time, we do not have a locally funded budget line for that, and in fact, we've been seeking grants for all of that professional development support. So, makes sense to build a local line to...
And Amy's been, she works overtime, getting consultants that come in who waive their fees, speakers, but it's getting harder and harder without recycling the same people. So, this would only help us expand our ability to get better, not better quality, but more people to come in, and different people to come in and speak with our teachers.
And certainly, we would encourage and expect that you would continue to chase grants. Thank you.
And the last item came from Mr. Murray, in my conversations with him a couple months ago, when we were talking about some other issues relating to the athletic department. Bob made it clear that there's issues, if we had the money, would be to hire an assistant boys and girls lacrosse coach because of numbers. We have a significant number of children playing in both sports with just one coach. And two things happens. One, it's supervisory. You only have one set of eyes, and you can only watch so many players at one time. And also, developmentally, there's nobody to really work with the other coaches, the other players. So, Bob, and we talked about this when we were talking about the track team and supporting what we already have, so we put that in there for consideration.
Yeah, he had stated, too, that, you know, it's a, people don't think of it, if you watch, you know it is. It's a very high-contact sport, so there is a real health and safety concern, from his perspective, of just having that one coach.
So, the total for those items totaled $225,800.
One of the things, before we move on, Bill, I just wanted to go back to one. I had also asked Bill to look at our psychologist/social worker guidance distribution, to see if there's anything that we can do to allocate between schools. Not additional staff, but between schools, and I know you have not had a chance to do that.
Right. And I'll take another look at it, to see if we can be more efficient down the line.
Okay.
The next, oops, the next issues are capital expenses. The first series that we just looked at were reoccurring. These items would be one, one-time purchases. The first, and we talked, I believe we talked about it at our last school committee meeting, to replace the gym divider at the high school. These were all in the budget that Mr. Ashley submitted, but I didn't put in the initial budget submission to the committee. The dividers in those classrooms that you see up there, 251, 252, 311, et cetera, and then the water fountains. The divider at the middle school was not included because I didn't get it as a, I didn't get it as a request. That's why. And these were all, you see the requests, and they fall where they fall, but we didn't receive one. And these next items are in the, I think, in the order of importance, if we had an unlimited amount of money. And we spent a lot of time...
Yes, we did.
...discussing all of these, because they're all, they all have merit. But when you're looking at a budget that can only go up 4%, you know, we made some recommendation. Again, that's why I said we're going to, you'll need time to digest all of it. One of the, this was, the first one was my recommendation, so mine didn't even make the first cut, so if anyone thought it was biased, it's not. One of my recommendations was to reinstitute our in-school remediation programs at the high school and the middle school by hiring two full-time teachers. For those of you who've been here a while, you remember a time when we used to have a full-time program at each school to handle students who violated the code of conduct, either at the middle school or the high school. And instead of having to suspend them for whatever offenses that were listed, we would be able to keep them in school, isolated from their friends, where they would do their work for the day. Now, the reason why this didn't make the first wave was that our thinking was that if we increase the amount of personnel to help with support with emotional, social-emotional issues, we may not need it. I mean, it would take, it's calculated risk, so to speak, but that's our, that was our thinking behind it, that let's see how the additional social workers do for us, and maybe that will lower the temperature behaviorally for our students.
You know, as well as like the academic support, because sometimes that comes from frustration.
Right, and, right, so that's why we did not include it. The next one, the kindergarten aides, again, we understand the value to have a second adult with our younger students, our youngest students, for the whole day. But when you're looking at the other items that we just talked about, it becomes a matter of how much can the budget hold? The .4, Chris asked, Mr. Ashley asked for an additional .4 school psychologist, since we already provided one through the region this year, there was no need to, the social worker, there was no need to expand the psychologist position. And same for guidance. Mr. Cabral and Mrs. Wardell asked for, each asked for a 1/5 guidance position, and we felt that since we're bringing on, we would be, if everything was approved, the way we recommended it, we would be bringing on two full-time social workers, so we would not see, we didn't see the need to add the additional guidance positions. Add an additional guidance position at the middle school, since there'll be a full-time social worker coming on board on September, I'm sorry, on February 5. We didn't think that this was a priority position to fill, even though the counselors there do have the highest caseload in the district. Again, because we're bringing on the social, if we weren't hiring, if we didn't bring on the social worker this year, I'd probably say this would move up the list and maybe into the, for consideration category, but since we already have the social worker, I think. And they don't do necessarily the same jobs, but if we're focusing on the social-emotional piece of it, I think this one can, we can maybe put off for a year.
And this was one of the areas I looked at, I asked you to look at reallocation.
Yes, that's correct. Yep, you did. To see if there was a way to help out there. The next two are to pay stipends for the mock trial advisors at the middle school and the cyber patriot advisors. We didn't include that because those are contractual items, and we really, we got into quite a bit of hot water with the union last time when we did a music position that we didn't get approval from them first.
Well, and not just that they're contractual, but we've asked to look at it holistically because we have so many stipend positions.
Right, and we have, and that's other documents that we have. We have other positions...
So many volunteer positions already that don't get stipends, so how do you pick two?
Right, right. That was overriding in our conversations.
I mean, eight was the same way.
Add a boys and girls soccer team at the middle school. We just felt that we had other priorities within the district. The next two, purchase Chromebooks, Chrome cards. We felt that the current budget submission had enough... We felt that the current budget submission had enough tech for the high school, even though Mr. Ashley would like more, and.
And they just got a large grant that provided?
Yes. And the last was to purchase high school team, uniforms for high school teams. We just felt that that still should be part of the fundraising capacity from the boosters.
Well, and I think the discussion too for that was, I have asked the A.D.s to come to look at a comprehensive view of what we can afford, what we can offer, and I'm not adverse, I don't think, to adding to their, their budgets, but I want to see an overall picture before we start doing that.
Because what we can do is, we, we should do that, and then if they come back and say, we need 8,500 for uniforms at the high school, maybe it's 2,000 at the middle school, we can use our fund balance, because they'd be one-time purchases, but.
But it needs to be part of a larger discussion.
Of a big, of a, a bigger picture provided to us as to what their needs are, so we can do it all at once, if possible, as opposed to piecemealing it.
Deb, you mean you've asked them to come to the finance subcommittee?
Well, no, I would ask at the last meeting.
Right, no, I'm going to ask, I'm going to meet with the A.D.s and we're going to.
Got it.
Direct them.
No, I think that's a really good idea.
And as part of that discussion of not only, you know, which sports can, how many, which, which can we support, how many can we support? I think that I would like to hear from them, say, you know, guys, and this is how much money, we need to support it, so that we have.
And that's an argument to make to the town, too, because.
Yes.
Probably more popular than almost anything we do.
And I also think it's important that you hear from the A.D.s regarding soccer.
Yes.
As to, I don't think either, I know Mr. Murray's not opposed to it, he, he's concerned about what it would do for space, soccer space, you know, where would the kids go? And I think it's important that, that the committee hears from them.
Well, that's why I want them to work together.
Regarding that.
Yeah. And do you have a timeline for that?
I just haven't gotten to them yet.
Okay. Won't be this budget cycle.
No, no, but that we will meet within the next month, ask them to give us the recommendations so we can, you know, then discuss them, because again, things like the, the uniforms and, and equipment that they may need, they can just, we can just do it all at once and then say, yes, we can fund balance it, if that's the desire.
Well, I think also, you know, if we're going to start going down that road, we have to also include other groups besides sports.
Agreed. That's why it's a bigger picture.
You know, there are students who are participating in music, you know, the school department doesn't fund instruments, uniforms, or any of those things for those groups either. So, if we're going to start looking at funding some of these athletic groups, we have to bring all of the other groups in as well. It's only fair.
So, that's what we worked on this past Saturday, for your thoughts. The next, in your packet, Dr. Larkin asked for a breakdown of stipends by academic, or what we consider academic stipends and non-academic. So, we created that list that's in your packet. And the academic stipends are on the top half and the non-academic are on the bottom. We then include, the second document, backup document, is a list of the coaching stipends. And then the third, I asked our principals to provide me with a list of activities where we have volunteers currently, but we don't pay them for the different activities, and I created that list for you as well.
But it's not in your packet?
No, you could just hit your button.
No, I just said this is good information for the budget, you know, the whole, for the town to see, too.
But the ones on one and two, Bill, those are all in the contract?
Yes.
Can I just go back to the things that we did not fund?
Sure.
In particular, the full-time kindergarten aides. Can we just review again what the breakdown is of the number of classes? And I thought they have a half-day aide now, is that correct?
They currently have two half-day aides.
Okay. And there's two kindergarten classes in each of the three elementary schools.
Yes. And I believe Mr. Cabral stated at the last meeting that there's an hour a day where the, the kindergarten teacher doesn't have an aide with them, because we use the elementary aides to cover for recess as well, and lunch. So, they're not in the classroom all the time, so.
So, it wouldn't actually have been hiring six full-time kindergarten aides, would be actually be increasing the full-time equivalent?
Right, well, yes, that's the same. That's, that's the cost, yes.
No, I understand the cost is the same, but it's not going out and hiring.
No, we're not hiring six new people.
People, we're just making.
That's a good catch. Well, you, you're hiring six new full-time people versus.
Three part, six.
Six part-time people.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, that's, okay.
So, it's, it is hire six full-time.
Oh, you are hiring six.
All right. But the state of affairs right now is that there's a half-time aide in each kindergarten class.
Yes.
There are two, like two, so you have one and one that have two people.
So, there, the only time they do not have coverage of a second person is for an hour a day. They have one that comes in the morning, one that comes in in the afternoon.
For both classes, or?
Yes. All, all the classes have that.
Two part-time aides.
Right, so, so there's, there's a difference in the morning, and there's a difference in the afternoon.
There's 12 half-time aides?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
So, to make, make it full-time, you need six.
So, that's why we're asking for one person, to make it more consistent.
Okay. All right. Two at each school.
Bill.
Yes.
Is that figure, a benefit figure, or is that combination of salary increase because?
It's the, it's all, it's all, it's salary, but mostly benefit.
For most of them.
It's about $30,000. It's $30,000 to cover the salary and the benefits, the additional benefits.
Thanks.
Ms. Wardell, you want to say something else?
But the issue would be, if we were to do two full-time positions, we still would need a, we still would need to retain two part-time positions for the lunchtime, for lunch coverage.
Okay.
We couldn't only have two people, two teacher assistants, cover all of lunch with all of the students.
And recess.
And recess, for safety.
Right.
We still would have to have at least, or even one other person cover lunch, for safety reasons.
Okay.
Mrs. Wardell, the aides who are assigned to recess duty, can you give me an approximate number of students that they are responsible for supervising during that time? Just approximate, just two aides on the playground after lunch.
Right, so, what we have right now is, usually it's half the school out of time goes out.
Okay.
So, you take the size of your school.
About 125.
You divide your school in half, and.
So, one, one something?
125 is.
Students go out first, and I have more aides go out with them. And I also have, so we have the Tivren aides go out, so it's three Tivren aides, but we also have special education aides go out also. That increases the number of aides that go out. So, it's three kindergarten aides with approximately, it's over 100 students.
Yeah, that's very dangerous.
But there are also, especially the children aides, that are also there with other students. But obviously, in a perfect world, we would love to have more adults who can work with them, and the principal, I, I as a principal, the law. And then for the older kids, there's only two grades, and it's best to use the law.
Do the first and second grade classes have any aides?
No.
No.
Okay. There any other questions right now?
Nope. Anyone else?
And again, all, and I just want to say, they're all.
Merit.
They all have merit. You know, there's none that are just, you know, things you don't need, and so they're all, they're all high-quality recommendations.
So, the bottom line of recurrent expenses, as recommended by the budget, or the finance subcommittee, was 225,800, and then out of capital funds, 56,300.
Yes.
Okay.
I can't tell if mine's none, in addition to what we had before.
Right, correct. Because we already purchased the truck. We have 33, now we have 33,500 in, in, in capital currently. Then you would add that 56,000 to it, it would bring it to 89,800.
And the 225,8 would be on top of?
Yes, on top of the, the total, which is.
So, yes, give me the totals. New capital, new operating.
The new capital, non-tech, is 89,800.
Tech?
Tech didn't change. I'm sorry, I got to add that in, I didn't do that one yet.
So, what was tech?
Tech is 127, 127,000, hold on.
127 is fine.
127, 625.
And then operating?
Whoops, I'm sorry. Elise, you want to do that one?
Total operating is 31,002,822. And that's with the addition of the 225, yeah, okay. And just to be clear, for.
Don't include the capital.
Marsha.
Don't include the capital.
This is not, we're, we took a little bit different approach this year, and we said, you know what, let's look at what we'd like, what we think we need, and then, and then let's back down from there based upon our, you know, discussions of what the taxpayers can afford, what the, you know, what's coming on in, in, on the municipal side, et cetera, et cetera. But we took a little bit different approach this year because we thought this is where we should start. Instead of starting with, you know what, it's only going to be 1%, we thought we really should start here, and then work down to a, a number if we needed to, and that, that's why we took this little different approach. So, this isn't necessarily that this is what we're going forward with, but this was a new approach for us, and this is the first step of that.
So, what I would recommend we do is just sort of let this kind of sink in a little bit, and take this up again at our next meeting, and maybe we can have a clean version of what the budget would be.
We'll.
Assuming we go with these.
Yes, we'll give you a clean look.
Yeah.
A three-page with, with that in it, so you can see it.
Okay.
When is our next meeting?
13.
February, the day before Valentine's Day, the 13th.
Okay.
Okay.
And then we'll try to have.
And you're having another meeting.
Yeah, we'll try to have a little summary of what we discussed at our next meeting as well.
Yeah, we focused on, on these items pretty much exclusively.
Yeah.
So, there's, there's plenty of other.
Sally, I'll get it for you tomorrow.
Discussion to be had, yeah.
Okay. All right, unless there's any other comments or questions, going on to 7B status on elementary before-school program?
Yes, Amy?
Thank you, yes. So, I just gave a brief overview based on your request to gather some information. As you know, I'm sure our state has very high standards for childcare, and starting back in 2005, stakeholders from across the state got together to increase those standards and develop a rating scale for best practices in childcare and extended day programming. So, I know we have a lot of expertise in the room. Just briefly, the Rhode Island regulations governing all of that were updated most recently in September of 17, and a DCYF license is required to receive DHS subsidies for children whose families qualify for childcare assistance. Those are usually families who are working poor, or families with low income who are in a training program. So, that license yields, is required, excuse me, a DCYF license yields a one on the Bright Stars rating scale. Bright Stars has a rating scale of one to five, and all home care that is licensed, all school care and all private care are ranked. Not all private programs choose to be ranked, but they can be ranked and families can go online and look at the, the ratings for those programs. They're very rigorous, and sometimes you can't get a higher score based on your environment, based on how much natural light there is. Other times, a higher score indicates that you have a really high staff-to-student or staff-to-child ratio, really good hygiene facilities, and things like that. So, in addition to our own Tiger Cubs, which is rated, some of our neighboring districts have before and after-school care and extended day programming that is rated. And a lot of that does have to do with the facilities in which they're housed. So, in Newport, the East Bay Community Action Program has childcare programming and extended day programming, which are technically different things, and they are rated four stars. In Middletown, the YMCA runs their before and after-school programming, and those programs are rated between one and three stars, depending on the facility, so each of the schools has a different ranking on Bright Stars. Bristol Warren has several sites, and those are two-star sites, again, probably related to their facilities. I've had a meeting with Jan Merman, who's at RIDE, he's in charge of 21st Century Community Learning Grants, and those are for before-school, after-school, and extended day programming. That's federal money that comes through to, to the Department of Education. That is highly tied to the percentage of children you have who receive free and reduced lunch. So, while he was very helpful and is happy to help Tivren, he was very honest about the fact that those funds would be limited for us. When you look at the districts that receive that federal money, their district has a much higher proportion of students who receive free and reduced lunch, like 70 or 80% of students. We might have one school.
We're about 25, is that right? 27.
27. And we have one school that, our Title I school has a higher percentage per asset, but it's still low in comparison to others. So, yeah, it's some 40, 42%, depending on the time of year and, and various families' eligibility. So, it's not likely that we would receive an application where, would we be accepted for 21st Century Community Learning Grant if we applied. And those funding streams have come in fits and starts, so they're not accepting applications right now, anyway. So, I've had conversations with the people at East Bay Community Action, and some of the people at the Newport County YMCA, and they're interested in supporting Tivren and figuring something out. It's complicated in terms of startup funds, which would be something for the committee to consider. It's also complicated in terms of licensure and finding a space, and then looking at the various types of fees families would pay. So, if we were to develop a before care, before-school care program, we would need to seek that licensure, and then we could accept any families who get DHS subsidies. There might be a sliding scale based on, and it's recommended that be based on free and reduced lunch, and then there might be full-pay families, so it may not be dissimilar to the aftercare that we have in the district. And those nonprofits are interested in, you know, helping us figure that all out, but it's a, has to be the right ratio in order to get stipends. You have to sort of play with the ratios in terms of the fees that you charge for full pay, so. Just briefly, next steps, Mr. Reerick and I have an appointment to visit the Pell Schools' Pell Champion Childcare, and meet with Christina Ruth, who runs that program for East Bay Community Action, and she particularly wants to talk about those various rates of pay and how you balance that all out to make it work. And I wonder if, you know, at your direction, we would want to gauge parent interest and then consider additional next steps?
I think gauging parent interest is number one. I, I'm hearing that this is a little bit complicated. I was, truthfully, I don't know all of the requirements with DHS and all of that. I was, truthfully, I don't know all of the requirements with DHS and all of that. It'll be a learning experience, just like many other things. I, I heard the need earlier in the year. I mean, obviously, we're in the middle of the year, people have made their arrangements, it's not so much a topic right now. I heard the need, and really, it's for the working parents who have this need to get to work. And, you know, they, right now, they are limited to, to jobs that allow them to show up at nine o'clock in the, you know, at the, at the lower grade levels. And this could certainly be an opportunity for them to be able to, you know, get to jobs that start earlier than that, 'cause many do. I, I do want us to continue to look into this. Are there any options available with other vendors? Is that something that's out there? I really don't know the answer to that question, but-
Certainly, um, some districts do it in-house, other districts partner with a community agency. Bristol Warren, I believe, does it in-house through their community, their Cozy, which used to be part of EdCAB and I think there's still some connection there, I wasn't able to get clarity on that. But it's complicated in terms of, you know, families paying, in terms of the balance and access to their eligibility for various supplementary-
I would envision it at all three elementary schools.
Where? That, I mean, that's it, like, yeah.
Cafeteria? Uh, I, I don't know.
Well, and then, do you hold a lottery? I mean, you only can have so many kids, so-
These are all questions that we're gonna be asking the folks in the report.
And is the business model that it's the district's care? So the district is saying, this is our before-school care and we contract out with whomever?
Yes.
Some districts do that, others have an inter-agency agreement and really share space in kind.
And how does that work with the inter-local trust with the liability of that and the insurance?
Those are all questions we have to get answers to.
Okay.
We haven't gotten that far yet.
Yeah.
Okay.
It certainly does work in other communities, I think it's the balance of finding. For example, at Pell School, which has over nine hundred students, I don't know their ratio exactly, we'll find that out, but Mrs. Ruth did say that in the morning, there's not as many parents as you might think, at least in their community, and that they always are at a balanced tipping point between having two classrooms, because they have them in classrooms, so the ratios are small and, so they can have a higher Bright Stars rating. And so, um, sometimes they need two classrooms, sometimes they need three, and in order to keep the ratio where they want it to be for children's safety and supervision, it ebbs and flows. They also have families who pay from, say, seven to eight-thirty, 'cause it's a set amount of time, but they really show up at eight-fifteen. And so figuring that all out is, is, can be complicated in terms of staffing.
Tiverton does have providers that offer before and after-school care and we pick them up and we bus them to school. We also drop them off after school at various providers throughout town.
Well, as far as I know, there's only two providers.
There's only one now, I believe.
Well, there's, I don't wanna say names, but there's several incorporated providers. There's also several home providers that also provide it. So it, there, there are other options. It's probably not as convenient as having them right at school and I definitely think we should look at it, but it, but there are other providers that provide that before and after-school care. But it would really be just because now we'd be responsible, we'd be taking that on.
We'd take them all day.
Yeah.
One of the providers that many parents used up until this September or late, actually late last year, did close their before and after-school programs. So I think that-
They limited to just all day now?
They only do all day. They were no longer licensed for before and after-school programs. So I think that increased the need for them, especially for the before-school program, for those parents that have to be to work at eight o'clock.
So, yeah, no, I'm not saying don't look at it, I'm just, there's, there's lots of questions, lots of, lots of, you know, just, you know, how, how you select who gets it, how do you, you know, you know-
Those are all questions, we're going on February sixth, and those are all questions that we-
Good questions, I mean, it's-
That we're gonna ask.
Well, if we could continue this conversation at our next meeting with an update, is that fair?
Sure.
Yeah. And are we, right now, is everyone in agreement, we're really just focusing on before-school at this point?
Yes.
Okay.
What is it you're doing on February sixth?
We're going to the Pell School to see this program.
See how they do it.
Gonna be there at oh-seven-hundred.
That's when it starts.
That's when they do it, so no sense in going at nine o'clock when the kids aren't-
We haven't actually done a formal needs assessment of our community. I think it's probably time to start doing that before you get too far into this. Intuitively, you would say, there's probably a need there, but you might wanna have a better sense of how many people would actually, because if it, if it is in fact something that does rely on people who are gonna pay the full fee, or whatever it is, as opposed to, you know, if, if you really need that as your, as a critical population to support it economically, then you probably need to know that.
Yeah, I think go there, see what they say about all of that and then Jerry said, we, then we kinda have to do a needs analysis.
You're right, because those are all questions, like, how do you, what's your ratio of-
Right.
Kids that make up your program and how do you maintain it and, you know, the real nuts of that.
I don't see this as a new recurring expense that we could possibly take on.
No, it wouldn't be this one.
It doesn't expense at all.
No, this would be a pay-
It has to be the grant-funded or, or-
Right.
Or they pay-
Right.
So pay.
Paid for, yeah.
And that doesn't get into the pay-to-play because it's a separate organization before school type thing?
Yes, you, that's how you, it's a, as long as you allow every child to participate and have an opportunity, you can have a sliding scale.
Okay.
Salary, pay.
All right, thank you, yes. Item seven C, Tiverton Charter Review Commission Update. This is Black, are you-
Yes.
Asked it now from your long-
Yes, I went, I went to the, um, Tiverton Town Council last night because I'm the liaison and then I left that and went to the charter because I'm also the liaison to that. And that one got over around eleven. So they're still just going through, you know, the whole hundred of them and discussing it and taking some votes again.
Hundred.
And, um, one of them was interesting, was about if, if you have a, a committee like Economic Development and nobody show, nobody is there for like two years or more, then you'll just sort of disband it. And I said, no, that's happened in the past in this town. People have left and then there's not a quorum, but then what you do is recruit other people to come back on and you don't take it out of the charter because these things are important. So they voted that one out, so that's what they're still doing. And they did have an interesting list of ten charter complaints, you know how everyone's trying to get a list of how many there have been? So I do have a copy of that, but it's in my other, other binder, but I'll get that to everybody because that's one thing we were looking at. So, um, I'll just keep going and reporting back out to you as they move along. Yep. Okay.
Let's not go.
Any questions? All right, item seven, eight. Eight B, proposed change to the high school schedule.
Yes.
Been really wanting to hear about this.
Last year, when Chris and I were having conversations about how to improve or provide additional opportunities to improve student learning, one of the things that we talked about was, you know, taking a look at the schedule to see if changing, by changing the schedule, it could enhance the, the learning environment in the school. So I, that was my charge to Chris and this year, Chris, you know, took on the initiative and I'll turn it over to him and let him explain how, what you see before you came about.
Thank you. So, as Mr. Reek spoke, it, it did start from an initial conversation last year about looking at our schedule. And so this past early fall, we put out a call for creation of a new team to review the schedule and we had a great turnout with about ten or eleven educators from most of the departments across the school. And we started by looking at our current schedule and what we liked about it and what also we thought maybe could use some refinement. And pretty clearly, we came across how we like how there is a rotation where you don't see the same class every day. But what came out was that the way the periods rotate wasn't equal and the length of the periods was varied depending on what period you have. And that created some essentially inequities in the amount of instructional time based on when that class was assigned to. So, um, what we did from there was we took a survey of approximately a dozen different high schools' schedules, from Rhode Island, Massachusetts, Connecticut, just to identify what, what else is out there. And there really was a range. We didn't find any one set particular schedule, they ranged from a simple four-block, ninety minutes each, to a standard seven periods, forty-five minutes each period every day, no rotation. And then there were many permutations in between there. So what that told us was that it really does, we, we took from that was, the school has to identify its own needs and think about its own demographics and what's gonna work best for each school. So we then took an initial survey to the faculty to gauge where the faculty thought the priorities would need to be in regards to a potential new schedule. And what came out pretty clearly was, teachers still wanted a rotation, but they wanted it simplified so that it didn't vary depending on the morning or afternoon and it was equal amongst, throughout the day. And also, they were looking for equity in terms of the amount of class time for each periods, that regardless of when your period met, it may have, it no longer would meet for more or less time. So from there, what we did was, we started to draft, and again, it did help to have the survey of the high school schedules here to, to look at some potential models. We created two different model draft schedules. One that had slightly longer periods each day, but less periods in a given day, and then one with the converse where there were more periods in a given day, but the periods were a little shorter. And we sent that back out to the faculty to say, based on your feedback, this is what, this is what are some potential options. And the faculty came back pretty clearly that they didn't want too short of a period. They wanted to make sure they had enough time for engaging rigorous coursework. But they also recognized that they don't wanna necessarily go to a straight block because they like to see multiple classes in a given day. So with that, what we did was, took that feedback and narrowed it down to close to the schedule that you see before you and presented it to the faculty at a faculty meeting and shared it with the faculty and had a conversation. Essentially, this is where the feedback is leading us to, what do you think? Generally, there was approval, but at that initial draft, again, what came out was the amount of time in each period and even then, there was some slight differences in the amount of time in each period in that draft. So the faculty came back to the team and said, go back one more time and just see if you can equally distribute the periods, that we like how it's rotation, we like how it's a simplified rotation, but see if you can do that. And so we did that and ultimately came up with the schedule presented before you that we're presenting tonight. You know, and I guess one, what kind of key piece was that it really was a school-wide team conversation over many weeks and months. And that we recognize, it doesn't necessarily satisfy a hundred percent of the teachers' wishes, it doesn't, but we do feel that the majority of the school, the teachers feel like it would be a better match because it streamlines that schedule and provides more equitable teaching and learning across the coursework.
And also, one of the other changes is that the advisory is being built into a ten-minute period after first period. Currently, it's one day during the six-day cycle, right, for one period or twenty minutes?
Yes. Right now, we have that proposed advisory time with the ten-minute block in between the first and second blocks of the day. I will tell you that in this conversation of the schedule, a kind of secondary conversation started around what we do with our advisory time. We recognize the need for advisory time, but we acknowledge that it's not quite serving the purpose that originally we thought the school had implemented it for. So we do plan on initiating a new, we're kind of continuing that conversation on advisory to talk, and this is almost regardless of when advisory meets. This is about the meat of our advisory program and making sure it's really about developing strong personal connections with our students and our teachers recognize that we need to take a look at that.
So now you have advise, so you will have advisory every day, but it will only be for ten minutes?
What, oh, sorry.
That's pretty short, okay.
Correct. But one, one piece to note on that is, we did talk about the potential for an extended advisory block that potentially if we implement it, similar to what we have now where it's approximately thirty minutes, that if we did that, then on that given day, we would modify the other periods accordingly to allow that. Like, 'cause some teachers, and in some of our initial research, discussed the benefits of having an extended advisory block. And so we do plan on discussing that in the advisory conversation later this spring.
Is advisory still one of those mandated ride?
Yes.
Okay.
It comes out right and it also comes out of the NEAS organization, too.
So the, the block that is the ten-thirty-eight to eleven-oh-four, I assume that's all lunch, correct?
Correct.
Is there a way of getting rid of that middle so that you're either in class and then go to lunch or have lunch and then go to class? I've never understood how that.
We don't have enough space. We, the number one, primarily, it's, it's-
Right.
Cafeteria can only hold so many seats and you can only have so many bodies and that's why we have to have the three lunches.
Okay.
We have three at the middle school, too, for that.
No, I know, I know, but even then, I'm just wondering if there's some way of jiggering it to not have that happen. Always wondered how that really works.
And I think it wasn't the issue, too, I, 'cause we looked at this, geez, early on when I was here, serving that many kids at once, if you just went to two, you just physically couldn't get them through in time and would have no time to eat.
You just have, it wouldn't, it's just not built for that many kids.
It's just not built for that. Like, the number of staff we have and how they go through and how they get the, by the time you got all of those kids through, if you only did two lunches, I think we did the timing and it was like, some kids would be left with like four minutes to eat.
And when we have the full advisory, that's one of the biggest complaints.
Yeah, is they don't have enough time.
They don't have enough time, yeah.
So what is, well, something that's never really, I've never really understood, I guess just personally, is what is the attraction of the rotation to the educator or the student? It seems to me utterly confusing.
Yeah. I can sympathize with the parent perspective, but I think the students and the teachers would say that it helps essentially provide a little variety in a given day in that historically, high schools especially, was a standard forty-eight minutes, same time every day all year long and it was, depending on the, the time of day, we, high school teachers realized that early in the morning, students are generally a little bit different behaved than they are, for example, last period in the day.
Right.
Of course, given circumstances, but that having the rotation essentially provides that variety for the students and the teachers so that you're not seeing that set of students the same exact time every day.
Do a lot of them get lost, teachers or students?
I don't, I don't think it's a matter of getting lost.
No. The freshmen on the first day or two, they get a little confused, but they pick up on it pretty quickly.
They do.
I'm not gonna tell you your business.
That's a lot.
Yes, Mrs. Black?
Does this schedule limit the opportunities for students to take different classes if they're so long in one class? I mean, are we gonna lose, are we gonna lose classes and opportunities?
No.
Because with the new formula of, of, that the state's requiring now-
They have the seat time.
With the credentialing, not the seat time anymore, that's gone, thank God. It's the credentialing for graduation, which is gonna be this class, you know, that's a freshman. So when I went to the orientation, we didn't talk about that and that's so important. And I don't see how this fits into that at all.
It allows for, it allows, one of the reasons why Chris wanted to stick with it is still allows for the one-three-five, two-four-six scheduling. So everything will still be scheduled, we'll still have some-
You'll still have all those classes.
Yes, we'll still have semester, yes, right?
Yeah, actually, the-
That's one of the reasons why you-
One of our initial non-negotiables was that no schedule, regardless of the, the period length of time, could be implemented, that would potentially cut or- length of time, could be implemented, that would potentially cut or cause a loss of programs or services.
That's what I'm concerned about.
That's one of the reasons that it's not...
And actually, right, the eye was on, can we find a schedule that provides a little flexibility in thinking about potential new courses or programming?
Now, that's one of the, when Chris first gave this to me, one of the first things I said is, well, why do, you know, obviously, why do you want to change it?
Yeah.
And that was like, number three, was that we'll still be able to keep that.
We still have to have everything that we love for.
Yes.
What is real, I mean, aside from homeroom beginning at 8:30, what is the real change happening here? You're evening out all the classes. Are you adding any slots?
No.
No.
No, this...
You're still rotating.
Yep.
So it really isn't a drastic change.
No, it's, no, it is not drastic.
Can you tell me the thinking behind moving homeroom to a little later?
Yeah. That, right now, we recognize that we have a homeroom period, first thing in the morning, you know, and then on the Thursday, the advisory, that the homeroom period was really only serving for attendance, and that the students were transitioning twice between classes in approximately a six-minute timing period. So there was quite a bit of movement in the halls, which is something we think about in high school in particular, in terms of transitions, in a short amount of time that wasn't really related to instructional time. So students were going to their homeroom initially, okay, attendance taken, and then three minutes later, they're going, another bell rings, there's passing time for the bell, they have to go to the national, and then it's like, okay, let's get started. So the teacher said, well, why do we have to have all this transitional time initially? Can't we take attendance first thing in the morning in our class? And hence, hence why we came up with this. And the other piece, is that when we surveyed the other high school's schedules, most have, the advisory structure varied in terms of how long or when in the day, but most actually seemed to have it not right first thing in the morning, but was a little later in their day.
Who's the next?
If I may, pardon me, I was going to add, if I may, that that period attendance and the expectation of taking attendance each period throughout the day is really important. So letting go of homeroom makes sense for that reason. That period attendance where we can see if a student showed up for class throughout the day really helps down the road when we're looking at interventions for a student and figuring out if there's a pattern to their behavior, a pattern of attendance or lack of attendance. So that's a best practice naturally, that would be allowed here and encouraged here by not having that homeroom time and skipping all that time in the hallways. And the other thing is, I heard a teacher today very enthusiastically talking about the schedule unsolicited, just with the simplification of, day two starts with period two, and day three starts with period three. And that should reduce anyone who might have been confused about the prior schedules. It's a simple change, but something they were excited about.
The homeroom period at the start of the school day was, is from a bygone era, before we had computers and before we could, the teacher could do it from their desk. You know, you had to, you had to get a body, a head count right away. You know, okay, Smith, you here? You know, like the Ferris Bueller movie. Now, the teachers still, we still take attendance every period, but it's done very quickly, and you don't need a dedicated period so that, so when you do the advisory, it's 10 minutes, but it's 10 minutes where you might get more done in that 10 minutes and you see the kids more frequently. You get them every day versus just once every six days.
Where you were spending time.
30 minutes.
Yeah.
You know, doing it that way. So I can see why, you know, the staff, you know, kind of went to that model, it makes sense, a lot of high schools do it that way. They'll do advisories, and some have even done away with the term "homeroom," is called advisory, and you just plug it in.
Well, I think that's the, one of the important points here, is this is staff-driven.
Yeah, it came, because I had a whole lot of ideas, and I left it up to Chris and his staff, you know, to bring something forward.
Kelly Levesque, Crandall Road.
Just a few years ago, we changed the high school schedule and we added that long period. Can you refresh my memory as to why we added the long period and now why we're making the change?
We did the long, we did the long period because we had, Mr. Fizette and the staff at the time had started conversations about possibly looking at block scheduling. So they wanted to rotate one period through that long block so they could get a feel for what it was like to teach for more than 45 minutes. So that's why it was implemented, and it just, the staff never, it never evolved into something they wanted to do.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Will this in any way improve the challenges that have been present with regard to scheduling students of multiple grades having to attend the same class at the same time?
No, because that's a matter of sections.
Yeah.
In other words, if you have a, one AP Calculus class, you only offer it once, so it doesn't matter what schedule you use, whether you use a...
Has to be that time.
Whether you use a 90-minute, you know, four periods a day, to all the variations that Chris talked about, it's still only going to be held once a day.
Right.
So what, how do we address that is, Chris will be working with his guidance and his department heads on prioritizing where they tell the computer how to schedule. So you won't have AP classes on the same time that you have band, for example, or other AP classes. You tell the computer to prioritize it, so you try to minimize the number of what they call conflicts. Even with that said...
It won't be perfect.
It won't be perfect. You'll still have a small handful of kids, because our guidance staff hand-schedule. After we run the schedules three or four times, the counselors then pull the students in and they do it, they work on it by hand in the computer. And there are just some times where, because we don't have enough sections of things. In other words, we only have one AP Calc, we have one AP Psych, so that those kids can only go to that one section, they don't, they can't go to multiple sections. Bigger high schools have, don't have that big of a problem with it because they offer more sections. They still have conflicts, they, you always will, but they get reduced by offering more sections, which is too small of a school to...
Yeah.
Right.
And we have the virtual learning.
Yes.
Right.
Which has helped, because to help alleviate that crush.
The virtual learning has?
Yes.
And the dual, yeah, the dual classes were...
And the dual enrollment, we still have that.
Dual enrollment was huge for my family.
Yeah, yeah. As I say, yeah, that always remains a challenge for principals, especially in high schools where there's just many competing demands and you want to meet them all.
Especially a small school.
Right, you also know that you don't have a lot of staff.
The dynamic of a small school.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, item 8C, State Report on School Infrastructure.
Can you accept it?
We have a vote, we have to vote on that?
Would like to.
Okay.
Oh, let me look at it. Again.
I'm going to motion to approve the schedule as submitted by Mr. Ashley and his staff.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second? So what this is for, can you hear me? I don't know if this is on. So this is the, what we have to submit now that they're going through this whole ride? Like, what are we doing with this?
With the, with the schedule?
Yeah.
We're just approving it.
Well, you're just approving it.
But it's going to the state.
No, not, your daily, your daily schedule doesn't go to the state.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're still back on the other one. I had skipped ahead.
No, no, you had me confused.
Excuse me, I didn't realize.
I'd asked for a lot, but where were you?
I'm sorry, I didn't realize we didn't vote on the last one.
We're not sending anything else to the state either, as far as I know.
Yes, it's the other way around. We fit their demands, it's our schedule.
I apologize, I didn't realize we did not vote on the last one. I'm sorry, Dr. Wypen.
All is in favor, quick. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for good work, so.
Yeah, and thank you to the staff.
Item 8C, State Report on School Infrastructure. Sally, Mrs. Black?
Yes, as I reported at the Budget Committee, I attended, Lieutenant Governor McGee gave a presentation of the school infrastructure, you've all seen it in the news, all the schools that need desperate help, and they passed out a booklet, and we were going through it. And I got to the back, I said, oh, good, we're not in it, and then I said, oh, no. I got on page 13 and there we were, a boiler was in there. But as I said before, I was very happy to tell them and tell everyone that Tiverton has done such a good job through the citizens with the elementary schools and the high school, and that the boilers and the roofs would be fixed, it had just been voted on. So it was really, really good that we were able to say that out in front of everyone because we have done an excellent job and plus the library funding our infrastructure.
So, Sally, we got kudos basically because we were able to replace that 600-plus...
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, well, good.
So it was good, I mean, it was in here because we hadn't, you know, as something that was wrong.
When they did the report.
So we were very happy to tell them that we were fixing it.
Oh, I got you, it was one of those things.
It was listed as a priority, so you were able to stand up and say, we've already addressed that.
Right, the state report was done two or three years ago, the schoolhouse report.
Yeah, it was good, I'm glad that I was there to be able to tell everyone, and especially on Lieutenant Governor McGee after, as I spoke to him, about how proud we were in Tiverton from what the citizens have done for us.
And if that pool of money does come, ever becomes available that the governor has talked about, we have our five-year plan already...
Yeah, it's good.
At Ride. So we would just basically say, we want to do X, Y, and Z off of it.
Perfect.
And ask for, to be reimbursed for it.
And then we also talked about the reimbursement, because we know it's a wealth-based formula, and with all our projects, we only got the bottom, the base is 30, we got 30, 31. And then every year, Representative Edwards, Mr. Fiore, and myself, and then this year, Dr. Locken went to ask the state to just up that, just so that the town could get reimbursed, it was 100-something. And that would have helped the town budget, it wouldn't have hurt the state, and, but we never did get it. But anyway, we, this time it's higher, it's 35 to 39, because of the health and safety. But all those years before, it was only 30 and 31. And then when we saw new buildings coming on, and they were 80 and 90, that's when we said, wait a minute, you know, what about us?
So did you say Tiverton is in this?
Yeah, it's on page 13.
The picture of the boiler at the high school made it.
Picture of the boiler was on page 13.
Oh, there it is. There it is, see?
I thought we had it in there, and then I said, oh, no, there we are.
They couldn't keep something like that out.
Did we send that to them? How did they, they didn't come in here and take a picture of it, did they?
I don't know how it's been in there.
Because they came in and did, they toured all the schools.
They toured the schools.
But you were able to stand up?
I was able to say, we have taken care of that, the people voted for bond, and they're doing it.
It's nice when you can send.
It was really good. It was a good day for Tiverton.
I don't know why I didn't recognize, so, yeah, and actually, that schoolhouse report estimates our costs at like 45 million, I think, actually? So we'll see, but we're, yeah. All right, thank you, Mrs. Black. Item 8D, Recess Rocks in Rhode Island Grant Approval?
Yeah, just asking the school committee to approve a recess rocks grant for Fort Barton School. We, school committee approved this grant for Pecassett, I believe, last year.
I'll make that motion, and thank you. Very exciting.
Okay, any questions? All is in favor?
And I'd just like everyone to notice, the grant was sent, noticed on the 10th, and it was due on the 19th, that's what happens. That's why they have to reply and then let us know sometimes, because it's like, very quick turnaround.
Quick window.
All right, any announcements?
Yes, the Commissioner of Education will be coming to visit us on February 8 at 4 o'clock here at the High School Auditorium.
Four. Four. What purpose?
To come and speak to us.
To the committee or to the town?
No, to everybody, anyone.
All people?
All people.
Good luck.
So we'll be sending out an invitation to everybody.
February 8.
February 8 at 4 o'clock here at the auditorium.
I'm going to be out of town?
Perhaps. So we'll invite everybody.
Commissioner Wagner.
Yep.
Yep, I'm going to be out. All right.
Dr. Black?
Yes, Mrs. Black?
As everyone can see, it's Project Purple, we decorated, and at town hall last night, they read the proclamation, and Chris Heron actually came to the police station yesterday to put the decals on the cars, and it'll be for DPW and the Fire Department, the Police Department, and the sign shop donated those, so that was very nice of him. And one of our friends gave me this to show how students should bloom, so I thought that was beautiful, she gave me this to use for tonight. And the community's been great, you can see, the flamingo over here, we had to save him, he lost his leg in the storm, so I brought him in, but Kelly and I have been going around and, if anyone wants any, but anyway, it's been a lot of fun. It's for a great cause, and thank you very much to the community.
Thank you. Yes, this is, it's not, it's fading compared to all the rest of you.
As per Mrs. Levesque's instructions.
It's also in honor of the Minnesota Vikings.
Really?
Sorry, I don't know if I'd say that.
Oh, come on.
Thirty-eight to seven.
I know, I'm a Pats fan, but I was born in Minnesota, so we've got to give them thumbs up for their season. So I will make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.